Present.
Present.
Here.
Good evening, everybody. How's everybody doing tonight? I love it. Thank you, Kathy. Thank you. There's always one in the crowd that we can count on, Kathy. Thank you. We're gonna start our meeting tonight at 6:33 PM. And welcome to tonight's city council meeting. I want to remind everyone that per the city's rules of decorum, all speakers, members of the audience and council members are to conduct themselves with decorum and not to engage in conduct with interrupts the orderly conduct of the city council meeting. Also, public comment through Zoom will only be accepted for the agenda items listed within the consent calendar, public hearing and discussion calendar sections of the agenda. General public comments will be accepted at the meeting by those physically in attendance at the appropriate time. And tonight, we are very pleased to have Army veteran Joseph Maguianos to conduct the Pledge of Allegiance. Mr. Maguianos, will you please go?
Maguianos.
Maguianes. There we go. Got it right. Only took three times. Maguianes.
I know, I was close.
I'd like to remind everyone that if you're a veteran, active-duty firefighter, police, police officer, please render a salute when we're saying the national, I mean, the...
Wait a second. Mr. Maguianos, I want to say that you are from the Band of Soldiers 1234. Is that correct?
Yes, yes, sir. I am from the Band of Brothers here in Laverne, 12034. And it's my pleasure and my honor to lead you in the... I'm getting old, you know, of the Pledge of Allegiance. And also, everyone else, please render their... Put your hand over your heart. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands.
If you could please...
A one, a two.
It is always an honor to, for me and our council, to honor America's greatest, our warfighters, our citizens that have signed a blank check for their life devoted to this country, God, country, and family. Further honor for me as a veteran still serving to have Bounder Brothers post 12034 to lead us. Staff Sergeant Joseph Maguianes, Army, I want to present you with... We're just like Marines, man. We never retire. Well, I know there's a Marine somewhere. They want some Marine, always a Marine, right? Semper Fi. That's okay. But we all should have joined the Air Force. Another great thing for me is here presenting you with the City of Laverne Certificate of Recognition presented to Joseph Maguianes, Staff Sergeant. This certificate is presented on behalf of the Laverne City Council's Army Veteran Joseph Maguianes with sincere gratitude and appreciation for your dedicated service to our country. God bless you, your family, sir. But we have to know a little something about you. I see, I see the ribbons on your amazing chest below the great, great cross. If you can, be so kind to let us know about you. Korea, I see. I'll let you do the talking. Not too much, though.
Oh, I have a limit. I was born and raised in East Los Angeles, went to Celejon High School. Some people might know where it is. Graduated in '69, got shipped after basic to Fort Ord, did my basic training there. From there, they shipped me to Missouri, from Missouri to Korea, from Korea. I decided to stay in, started my family. I did. I spent 21 years in the military among Germany and Colorado and here and there. And when I retired, I found out, moved to, well, got divorced, got married again, came to Laverne, and fell in love with Laverne. Yeah, I'm telling you. So, I consider myself a Lavernean, if that's how you say it. Okay. But I know I'm not, but like my wife says, "You're not Mexican." I said, "I am Mexican, my heart is anyway," you know, with a name like Maguianes. Anyway, thank you very much for the honor and the privilege. Thank you.
Real call, Mr. Domer.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Councilmember Crosby.
Here.
Councilmember Johnson.
Present.
Councilmember Lau.
Present.
Mayor Protem Cashafagita.
Here.
Mayor Hepburn.
Present.
All here, sir.
Madam City Attorney, was there any report out from our closed session at 5:30?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. There was no reportable action taken in closed session this evening.
Very good. Thank you. Tonight, we have five presentations. First, we'll recognize the ULV baseball team. ULV has enjoyed an outstanding season boasting a 34-9 record and an impressive 79% winning percentage. That's really, really good, which they look to carry into their postseason run. The team is led by head coach Scott Winterburn. That's close to Hepburn. There you go. We got a burn in here. We like those burns. With support from assistant coaches Keith Prager, Ralph Graheda, Justin Duarte, Gabe Miranda, Matt Durant, and Luke Garcia. Do you have the coaches or is it... You're, you're, come on up.
Yeah, I was, yes. How was it? It was on my first team. Yeah, great.
You want to say a couple of words before we start?
I just want to thank you for this recognition. I want to thank my A.D. And, you know, I've been doing this for 25 years at the University of Laverne, not only with the kids on our team, but serving the community. And it's been a great place. I've raised my family here. And Laverne is awesome still. That's why I'm here. So, thank you very much.
You're welcome. Very welcome. Yes, and speaking of burn, the Hepburn family has donated to the University of Laverne with our daughter going there, so we have made donations. So, yes, we did. Yes, we try. There's a number of people that went to University of Laverne, especially in the crowds, so it's a wonderful place. City of Laverne honorary certificate. The City of Laverne Council is proud to recognize the University of Laverne 2025 baseball team for being crowned the SCIAC Tournament Champions and securing an automatic bid to the NCAA Division III Tournament. Shall we do the players? Let's do the players. I'm gonna try this, okay? Yeah. So, the players: Aaron Wobry, Aiden Salcedo, Andrew Went, Austin Klopfenstein, Benny Vogel, Colin Schufz, Chris Schufz, Schultz, oh, that's a Schultz, Christian Kakahashi, Cole Monson, Corbin Duffield, Daniel Moreno, Daniel Summers, Ethan Galindo, Gabriel Lucero, Garrett Halbassin. Halbassin, very good. Miata, Isaac Barales, Isaiah Figueroa, Jacob Castro, Jacob Fox, Jaden Guzman, Jake Globerman, Jake Hernandez, Jake Ledford. Are these employees of the City of Laverne? This is a lot here. James Moya, Jason Givens, Jordan Garrison, Jordan Mansfield, Justin McFadden, Justin Reeves, Kyle Noel, Logan Courtill, Logan Reese, Lucas Quintana, Malachi Francois. Malakai Francois. Wow, these are great names. Yeah, that's a good name. Matt Rice, Matthew Desmar, Matthew Diaz, Mickey Rugazik, Morgan Petito, Nathan Perry, Noah Garcia, Nolan Angriano, R.J. Libby, Ryan Vosika, Tyler Locar, Wesley Bragg, and the coaches again, as I said, Gabe Miranda, Justin Duarte, Keith Prager, Luke Garcia, Ralph Graheda, Scott Winterburn. Hello, again. Your hard work, dedication, and perseverance exemplifies the Pride of Laverne dated this 19th day of May 2025. Certificate of Laverne. We also have a certificate, the Assembly Certificate from John Harabedian for the SCIAC Tournament Champions. On behalf of the California State Assembly, I'm proud to congratulate you on this tremendous accomplishment. Your strong teamwork, dedication to the game, and perseverance through adversity are truly commendable. I look forward to your program's continued success in the future. Go Leopards. Laverne, California, May 19. Do you want to hold those up? Here. Here, get in here. Come on. Oh, I need my glasses. Want to do that? And on there? Come on up. The City of Laverne honorary certificate. The Laverne City Council is proud to recognize the University of Laverne 2024 volleyball team for their outstanding achievement in ending their season in the NCAA Division III Volleyball Championship Quarterfinals. And you are?
Dr. Jenna Panettiere, Director of Athletics.
There you go. Well, you're gonna say the names because I'm gonna let you do these. So, you come on in the middle here.
Okay. Allison Whiteman, Bella Hargrave, Cece Flaherty, Isabella Emanuel, Isabella Quiros, Julia Thomas, Kaitlin Katena, Kaitlin Blumer, Caitlin Patterson, Kylie McGary, Kimi Watanami-Mehu, Lauren Gott, Lexi Giacobe, Madison Smith, Malia Capistrano, Mariah Ray, Maya Ray, Sydney Humphrey, Tova Craig, Valerie Gallegos, Vanessa Marquez, and Zachy Costin. Coaches are Ayanna Mir, Jack Cobberly, Mario Meza, Randy Taylor Tome, and Jeff Hendershaw.
Better job than I did. Your hard work, dedication, perseverance exemplifies the Pride of Laverne dated this 19th day of May 2025. Also, from our State Assembly, certificate of recognition, University of Laverne volleyball, and recognition of the SCIAC Tournament Champions. On behalf of the California State Assembly, I'm proud to congratulate you on this tremendous accomplishment, your strong teamwork, dedication to the game, and perseverance through adversity are truly commendable. I look forward to your program's continued success in the future. Go Leopards again. Laverne, California, May 19. Signed by John Harabedian, our 41st District Assembly member. Yes. Turn this on. Head on. We turn them.
Good evening, everyone, and thank you, members of the Laverne City Council, for having us here. As the Director of Athletics at the University of Laverne, it is truly my privilege to be given the opportunity to share some of the incredible strides our athletic programs have made this year. At the University of Laverne, we understand that our success is deeply intertwined with the City of Laverne and the broader community. The relationship between the university and the city has never been more important, and we are constantly striving to strengthen our partnership with the people and businesses of this great city. From engaging local businesses to involving our neighbors in our events, to providing a space for families to come together at our games, we strive to be a community resource that inspires pride and connection. And our goal is to continue building a stronger bridge between the university and the city every year. We know that athletics is about more than just competition. It's about bringing people together, lifting spirits, and creating opportunities for shared experiences. Our student athletes represent some of the best of what ULV has to offer, and we want the city to feel just as proud of their achievements as we do. We are committed to working hard and hand-in-hand with the City of Laverne to ensure that our programs continue to benefit both the university and the community. From groundbreaking performances by our teams to transformative facility upgrades that will benefit our student athletes for years to come, I am excited to tell you a little bit about what we're doing. We're not just growing, we're thriving. This year has been a dynamic one, and while there are worse certainly challenges along the way, we have constantly found ways to elevate our programs and make our athletic department a source of pride for the university and the city. Let me first recognize the heart of everything we do, our student athletes. Our young men and women embody the spirit of perseverance, discipline, and leadership. They consistently achieve at the highest levels, balancing the demands of rigorous academic work and the physical and mental challenges of college athletics, not to mention their jobs. At our department, broke 101 this year for the first time ever with combined team championships in our history. Your 24-25 Leopards... And just this year, your 24-25 Leopards specifically combined for three Skyak Team Champions, two Skyak Individual Champions. And while we're still waiting to hear about our spring awards, we have three NCAA All-Americans, six NCAA All-Region athletes, and 26 All-Skyak Award winners. Both as individuals and as team sports, we've had some remarkable performances this past season. Volleyball, the, excuse me, our women's volleyball team had an exceptional season, earning incredible accolades for the program for a second straight year. Not only did they secure a spot in the NCAA Elite Eight, finishing seventh in the nation at the end of the year. They also won the Skyak Championship Tournament for the first time in history, beating Claremont Mud Scrips at home. Individually, our team had the NCAA Regional Ten Player of the Year, the Skyak Newcomer of the Year, four players earning All-Skyak honors, and two of them were All-Americans. The women truly demonstrated excellence. In addition to their individual accomplishments, our volleyball coaching staff was named Skyak Coaching Staff of the Year, recognizing their leadership and dedication in guiding the team to national prominence. Their combined success has made them one of the premier volleyball programs in the nation and a source of pride for the university and the city. As we have seen, just yesterday, our men's baseball team closed out another historic season. Not only were they awarded their 24th Skyak Regular Season Championship, beating Pomona Pitser. They also claimed the Skyak Championship Tournament title for the first time since 2015. To top it off, they hosted and closed out the NCAA Regional Tournament here at Benheims Field, showcasing their ability to compete at the highest level. Throughout the season, seven players earned All-Skyak honors, and as I mentioned earlier, we are still waiting to hear who will be All-American because that's happening. This success on the national stage, along with their historic tournament titles, is a direct reflection of the hard work and commitment of both the student athletes and the staff. Speaking of which, our baseball staff, led by Coach Winterburn, was named Skyak Coaching Staff of the Year for leading this talented team to new heights. The pride and success of our baseball team has brought the university and the city this year amazing accolades. And to round it out, two of our men's track and field athletes were named individual Skyak Champions at the Skyak Championship Meet earlier this month with 110-meter hurdles in the discus. Both they and head coach Kevin Reed will be flying out to Geneva, Ohio later this week for the NCAA Championships, and we wish them luck. We are also excited to announce the hiring of Drew Ray, our new men's soccer coach, and Richard Sanchez as our new head football coach. Both coaches bring fresh energy, experience, and a vision for the future of the program. We're confident that under their leadership, these two teams will be set on a path toward renewed success in the seasons to come. On the academic side, college sports communicators, the nationally recognized Athletics Communications and Sports Information Structure, selected 27 University of Laverne athletes for Academic All-District Awards. To be eligible, students must be at least a sophomore and have at least a 3.5 GPA, compete in 90% of the institution's matches, or start in at least 66%. It's pretty awesome. But the accomplishments this year aren't just happening on the competition surface or in the classroom. Behind the scenes, we're making significant improvements and investments into our facilities to ensure our student athletes have access to the best resources for training and development. One of the most exciting developments is the renovation of our weight room that was made possible through a generous donation from one of our valued alumni. This renovation is a game changer for our athletic programs. With upgraded equipment and a modernized space, we are ensuring that our student athletes have everything they need to train, recover, and excel. And additionally, we're excited about the new Ortmeier Statement scoreboard that will be installed in June, also funded through this donation. The state-of-the-art scoreboard will enhance the fan experience and provide better visibility for both players and spectators. It's a step forward in making the stadium a premier venue for both our university and the community. And the last bit of renovation we're doing before the start of the New Year is in our athletic training room, ensuring that our athletes have access to the highest-quality care and recovery facilities. The health and well-being of our student athletes are a top priority, and these upgrades are a critical part of supporting their overall development. Looking forward, we remain incredibly excited about the direction of Laverne Athletics. The past year has shown that when our coaches, staff, and student athletes work together, amazing things happen. With new leadership, facility upgrades, and a continued commitment to excellence, we're confident that the future is even brighter. I want to again express my sincere gratitude to the city for its continued support of the university and our athletics program and the students who we serve. Whether through cheering on our games and our, excuse me, whether through cheering on our teams at our home games or supporting the university's growth, the partnership between the city and the university is vital. We are proud that athletics can serve as a community hub for excellence, and we look forward to another year of inspiring achievements both off and on the field. Go Leos.
Thank you very much. It's very important, the collaboration between the university and the city. And not only that, when your people come and the families come, they spend their tax dollars in Laverne. I'm a very happy camper about that. It affords the wonderful services that we provide, but I'm glad you're doing this. I think this is something we need to do from here on in to, you know, celebrate your achievements. I think it's a wonderful idea, and this is fantastic. You guys have done amazing things right now. We're glad to see all the improvements, too. It's a beautiful campus. We're very proud and honored to have the University of Laverne part of our city and also the students and all the faculty and co-mingle with all of us residents here. So, thank you very much again. Public Works Professionals, I think we need Public Works all to come up here, please. There you go. City of Laverne proclamation. Whereas Public Works Professionals focus on infrastructure, facilities, and services that are of vital importance to sustaining the small-town charm of the City of Laverne and the quality of life for our citizens, and whereas these infrastructures, facilities, and services could not be provided without the dedicated efforts of the nearly 50 Laverne Public Works employees, our dedicated professionals at all levels of government, whereas these professionals are responsible for rebuilding, improving, and protecting over 97 miles of streets, 99 miles of city-owned sewer mains, they must work all the time. Thank you very much, 151 miles of water mains and other vital structures and facilities that allow Laverne residents and businesses to thrive. Whereas it is the public interest for our business leaders, citizens, and children in the City of Laverne and throughout the nation to gain further understanding of the importance of Public Works and Public Works programs in our communities. And whereas, in 2025, Public Works Week inspires us to highlight and honor the invaluable people who make up the City of Laverne's Public Works Department and the positive impact they make every day, now be it proclaimed to the City of Laverne that the week of May 18, 2025, be recognized as Public Works Week. And we urge all citizens, join us in recognizing the substantial contributions Public Works make in protecting our health, safety, and advancing quality of life dated this 19th day. Thank you all very much. Director, would you like to say a few words?
Good evening. It's an honor to lead the work of the men and women of the Public Works Department. Public Works, like many cities throughout the nation, is really the crew that handles the infrastructure, which is the main lifeblood of any community going, making sure it's safe, reliable, clean for all our cities. So, just wanted to honor the great work and celebrate the City of Laverne.
Thank you, Danny. We have amazing departments in the city, but usually and generally speaking, Public Works are the first on and the last off when it comes to any of the functions we have, and we really do appreciate their service. You see them on the streets, you see them checking the sewers, you're checking and changing water mains, and all the wonderful things that make this city. And behind the scenes, we have everybody from billing to accounting to people that you see. You come to the counter, friendly, wonderful faces, and they do an amazing job. So, we couldn't do it without you guys, and we really appreciate and congratulations to you all. Thank you very much. Thank you very much.
And I think this is our last presentation. This is for Asian American and Pacific Islander Heritage Month. So, if I can get... Come on up. These are, if you've ever had coffee at Namba, it's thanks to this beautiful woman right here who makes it all happen.
here who makes it all happen.
Every time I go to Namba, I'm going to.
There's a line.
It's out the door.
So, whereas Asian American and Pacific Islander Heritage Month celebrates the colorful and invaluable histories and cultures of Asian Americans and Pacific Islanders throughout the United States, and whereas Asian Americans and Pacific Islanders representing more than 50 ethnic groups and 100 different languages enrich our nation with their diverse cultures and are essential contributors to our society, and whereas the theme for the 2025 AAPI Heritage Month, A Legacy of Leadership and Resilience, celebrates the hard work and perseverance of AAPI leaders who establish a foundation for future generations to thrive. And whereas Asian Americans and Pacific Islanders are one of Laverne's fastest-growing demographics, bringing with them priceless cultures and perspectives that contribute to the flourishing of Laverne. And whereas Namba Coffee Company continuously exemplifies excellent leadership, facilitating community through its events and engagement with the University of Laverne students and Laverne residents, and whereas Namba Coffee Company is an invaluable business that reminds us of the importance of togetherness, hospitality, and family, now be it proclaimed by the city of Laverne that the month of May 2025 be recognized as Asian American and Pacific Islander Heritage Month. And we commend Namba's innovative leadership and community events, which have helped transform downtown Laverne into a vibrant and welcoming gathering space. So, thank you. And honestly, if you haven't been to Namba, you're missing out. They've got everything. Just coffee, it's live music, kombucha, just, it's an amazing place. So if you haven't stopped by, please do.
Thank you so much for this recognition. I won't talk too much, but I just wanted to say thank you so much to this community. You guys have taught me a lot about what it means to show up for one another. This is my first venture. Namba Coffee is my first baby. So thank you so much for showing up for us, for all the love and support. Thank you so much to our police officers. I feel so safe being down the street from you guys. Thank you so much to this beautiful team. I am so honored to be here in Laverne. Thank you so much.
Just let your family and friends and other businesses, we're open, we've got space, we want businesses just like yours. And with families and friends, they can keep their dogs outside, they can roam around, they can have a good time, have a good product, have conversation. That's what Laverne's all about. So thank you. Thank you. Mr. Chief Gonzalez, please come forward.
Good evening, Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem, council members, city staff. I have the honor and privilege today of highlighting or showcasing a new program at the Police Department. Oftentimes, we see law enforcement at different, on the news, at different, showcasing different things they do, but not often do we get to do it here in Laverne in a smaller setting. We have a new program at the Police Department. It's, we're recognizing our employees at a more frequent pace than we normally do. We have several awards throughout the year, throughout the city. This is a new program, again, to highlight and celebrate the incredible work that the men and women do every day. And it's the Employee of the Quarter Recognition Program. This program is designed, whether they're sworn or non-sworn, excuse me, or professional staff, and we want to acknowledge and acknowledge those who are seen doing more, not just doing their jobs, but showing leadership, working together, and staying connected with the community, and meeting the mission and vision and dedication not only of the organization but the city itself. One of the best parts of this program is that it's peer-driven. The nominations come from coworkers, supervisors, even those being supervised. So when someone is recognized, it means that their efforts have truly stood out to the people who work alongside them every day, day in and day out. So this is honestly the very first of its kind, and it's the first quarter that we would like to acknowledge two employees tonight. So tonight for 2025, the first award for sworn staff employee of the quarter, we're going to recognize Officer Zachary Fiddler. Officer. Now, Officer Fiddler is seen as someone who has hit the ground running after his release from training, and he's already made a big impact. He's been praised for making sound decisions and staying calm under pressure. He has set the high, he's set the bar high for productivity, leading the department with citations and arrests, and has been, has seen taking on complex investigations, including several fatal traffic collisions. He's also known as someone who's willing to lend a hand. Zach is a pleasure to work with, who brings the energy to the team, and we're truly lucky to have him as part of the Laverne family. So today, we are going to award him with. So here we have an award for Mr. Zachary Fiddler, which reads Employee, this award is presented to sworn staff employee Zachary Fiddler for the first quarter. So congratulations.
Definitely not prepared for this. But thank you for everybody that has helped with the recognition of this. If you guys don't know, I was a lateral from San Bernardino County, where I was a deputy for 10 years, and then I resigned and joined our family business, and took six years out of law enforcement, and there was still part of me that still wanted to serve, so I came back, and Laverne welcomed me with open arms, and I truly appreciate it. And I can honestly say that this is probably the most fun I've had as a law enforcement, being here in the city, and that goes a lot to with not just the great fellows and gals that I work with at the Police Department, but it's the city and the community as well. I've enjoyed every moment that I've been here, and I truly enjoy coming to work. So I want to thank everybody from the city, the staff, and the community. Thank you again.
I think that your children need, bring them up here for a picture, but I think, I think there was a mention of In-N-Out after this. I'm not sure.
Well, this is my beautiful wife, Lisa, and I couldn't have done this without her, obviously her blessing to allow me to come back and to serve. She is the glue that holds our entire family together and our three munchkins. So this is our oldest.
Hello.
His name is Jack, and then our middle son, Parker, and then this is Luke. We appreciate everything that you guys have done for us, so thank you again.
Smile pretty for me. Smile like yourself. Luke, come on, bud. It's okay. Yeah, it is.
Exactly. Okay. So next, we're proud to recognize the Professional Staff Employee of the Quarter, and this year's recipient for the first quarter is Community Services Officer Daisy Palito. Daisy has been with us for the last six years and has made valuable contributions across multiple divisions. She brings creativity, innovation, and a strong work ethic to everything she does, whether it's working on the branding from design, community events, or even our recent annual report. Daisy brings professionalism and pride to every project she's a part of. She's a strong team player, a leader, and a mentor to others, and her creative vision continues to be a real asset to the department and to the community. So please join me in congratulating Ms. Daisy.
That's all I got.
The same for you. Where you going, Dave? Where you guys going? We're going to move on to announcements of upcoming community events. We have a couple cards here. We have Andrea Blockinger. She's right there. Andrea. You're up. Andrea. Andrea. No, it's Andrea. Not Andrea, she didn't like that. Andrea. There's the boss.
I didn't want to interrupt a picture, so, you know, pictures matter. On behalf of Tri-City Mental Health, just want to remind everyone that May is Mental Health Awareness Month, and so Tri-City has a flyer of events throughout the month. It's over there on the side in the chambers. They have quite a few different events, so there's always a way to feel included and involved with Tri-City, so feel free to look them up and look at the flyer. Thanks, guys.
Thank you very much. Kathy Kalusek.
Good evening, everybody. I'm Kathy Kalusek, Vice President of our Laverne Historical Society, here to announce some exciting events we have coming up. Saturday, June 7th, we are going to have a huge vintage sale. We ended up, when we had our walking tour, wouldn't do vintage sale, but we're a little concerned with the weather because we got rained out at the community yard sale. So this is going to be a big one. This is going to be at Sherry's House, which is 3949 Bradford Street. So it's Saturday, June 7th, from 10:00 to 4:00. We, of course, will have some jams, jellies, marmalades, we'll have vintage treasures, we're going to have afternoon tea and cookies, hang out with friends and neighbors, enjoy beautiful weather. If you don't find anything you want to buy, we take donations, so, you know, feel free. We do have some flyers on the table. Our next event is going to be our community meeting over at the Hillcrest Meeting House. And this will be, our presenter will be David Allen, and he'll be talking about, I think, his new book, which is called Waving at Strangers, and it's a collection of the best of his newspaper columns, and everybody loves David Allen, so please join us for that. That is Monday, June 9th, 7:00 p.m. at the Hillcrest Meeting House. And it's free, but of course, we take donations and memberships, too. And then the last one is for the Garden Friends Fifth Annual Plant Sale. And this will be June 13th and 14th from 8:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m., and then June 15th from 8:00 a.m. to 12:00 p.m. This is at the Historic Holy Trinity Episcopal Church, which is 100 North Third Avenue, Covina. It's free admission and parking. They take cash or Zelle, and I understand, I've never been there before, but I understand they have some good bargains on plants, so I intend to go one of those days and buy some more plants. And memberships, of course, 20 for individuals, 25 for family, 200 for lifetime membership, so you don't have to have us, exactly, have us bug, just like our mayor, Heckburn, he is a life member.
Yeah, I'm a lifer.
So come see me. Thanks so much, everybody.
Thanks, Kathy. Appreciate it. Mr. Romero.
I'd like to introduce a few events that will be taking place at Laverne Library. From June 2nd to August 10th, LA County Libraries will have a summer discovery program where people of all ages can win prizes by reading books and completing activities. People can participate and register online. People can participate and register online at lacountylibrary.org or get a game card in person at the library. And to kick off this summer discovery program, we'll be holding a magic show for children ages 6 to 12 on June 11th at 5:00 PM. Christopher T. Magician will share some of his favorite books and bring them to life with fun, interactive magic. And starting June 6th, we will begin our session of Smart Start Storytime on Fridays at 11:00 AM. There will be six sessions of the Storytime from June 6th to July 18th, excluding the 4th of July. During these sessions, children ages 2 to 5 can enjoy books, songs, rhymes, and movements while learning school readiness. And throughout the month of June, the Friends of the Library will be holding a lobby book sale where people can get a great deal on books. And all the money raised by these sales go towards purchase of new books and funding of our library programs. Thank you.
Thank you, Adrian. Appreciate it. Any other announcements or upcoming events? I've got a couple items. One of them, if you've been seeing in the news lately regarding the depopulation of Los Pedrinos, which is the facility that houses some pretty heinous offenders, I call them youth offenders, but I call them inmates. And the judge ruled that they're not gonna completely close Los Pedrinos, but they are going to depopulate some of those people into some of the other camps in the surrounding areas. Our biggest concern right now is affable page, and they're looking at those with a certain number of those. But we are working, Mr. Domer's working with this county supervisor, also with the probation department, as Mesho Cash Faguita also is on the probation department, right under the director. And very concerned about that. It's a very serious situation, but we're looking at it closely and making sure what direction we're going in and what the population would be coming to our camps. And we're gonna have a voice in that and make sure that we know what's happening and who's coming there. So news to follow. It's supposed to happen in the next month or two, but we're very concerned about it. City manager is concerned about it, and it's something we'll be watching very, very closely. And if there's something issue comes up, we're gonna notify everyone and let us know our process to move forward, to have our opposition to it. So anyway, that's one of the big ones. On a sad note, I don't know if you guys, Gary Hunter, who used to come to our meetings quite often, and Gary was just an advocate for his community. Gary passed away in February, and I talked to his, his wife had sent me an email this morning, and I was just, I was flabbergasted because we loved Gary. He used to come in the front row with his little hat and, you know, where there's issues with his bridge, with lighting and just, you know, water stuff, but he was just, he was a great resident and he will be truly missed. And we'll be closing in honor of him tonight and hopefully have something in the future from his wife. So just a sad bit of sad news. He was 81 years old. He had a good life, but 81 is young these days. So just way too, way too young to be going. But with that, any other announcements, council? We'll now move on to the consent calendar. All items on the consent calendar are routine. It will be enacted by one motion unless a member of the city council or a member of the audience requests separate discussion or just wants to make a statement on one of the items. Counsel, are there any requests to pull an item? That would be no. City Manager Domer, are there any requests to pull an item from the consent calendar or any items removed?
There are no requests to pull an item, though on the discussion calendar, I would like to have removed item 11. It's the authorization to hire retired and new tenant as range master for oversight of firing range used by outside agency. We're still in some discussions based on recent CalPERS
rulings.
Communication, and we'll be bringing that back at a future meeting. So we will be removing that from the discussion calendar.
Okay. With that, do I have a motion for the remainder of the consent calendar?
So move to approve?
Second. Second. Let's vote, please. Is this a study session? It was the other way around. We did that intentionally, Steve. We flipped the switch around.
The consent calendar was approved 5-0. Motion by Crosby, seconded by Lau.
Very good. Thank you very much. There are no public hearings tonight, so we move on to the discussion calendar. There are two items tonight in the discussion calendar. The first item is the first reading of an ordinance changing the date of the city municipal election. City Manager Domer, would you like to please provide the staff report on this item? You're up.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor and council members, and I'll give JR just a little bit of time to bring up the presentation. So this is a first reading of an ordinance to change the date of the city's municipal general election. I get the... So a little bit of history on this one. Prior to March 2020, the city council elections were held on the first Tuesday following the first Monday in March of odd numbered years. So 19, 17, 15, odd numbered years. Senate Bill 415, which was the California Voter Participation Rights Act, was passed and then was effective after January 2018. So what it looked at was if voter turnout at one of those odd numbered years was less on average than 25% of the other votes. And for Laverne, yes, it was. So what the council had to do through the adoption of ordinance 1080 was to move the general municipal election from an odd year to an even year. And that is consolidated at that point with the statewide primary. But then what the state did, because the state does these things at times, is they decided, well, during presidential years, you know, we want to be in March, we want to be one of the first ones, but during gubernatorial years, let's give enough time for TV advertisement and all that stuff. So they moved it back to June. So it went from March to June, depending if it was a presidential or gubernatorial year. So the city council passed ordinance 1108, which aligned it with that. So what it brings basically to us is that we have some elections in March, we have some elections in June of even years. But all elections, there's a nomination period, and that's when it's made known that, hey, anybody who wants to run for council can seek nomination, and there's a process. Those are, the period is Election Day minus 113 days or Election Day minus 88 days when it closes. So E133 to E88, just for abbreviations because we like that in government. So for March elections, that nomination period is from early November to early December. For June, it's early February to early March, but it goes back and forth. Ballot measures have other timelines. So when there's a March election, that really puts the onus on the people who want to put some, the arguments, which is the message for, and then the proponents review it, and they have a rebuttal to it, or the opponents, yes. And that puts it all at the end of December. So it kind of goes over with the Christmas holidays and New Year's holidays, you know, lower staffing at the city or closures by the city. So it really kind of complicates those items. In the November election, the nomination period is early July to early August. Again, it's gonna be that E133 or E88. And, but the item is, is that it's a better-known time period. The majority of LA County cities and other county cities hold their elections, municipal elections with the November general election. So in LA County, 65 cities hold their municipal elections consolidated with the statewide general. But only 15 cities hold their municipal elections in March or June, going back and forth. Some other cities hold primaries, and then they'll hold their general election in November. One of the concerns from this most recent March 2024 elections was regarding the noticing of that nomination period. People basically said, well, I didn't know. I thought it was a different date and all that stuff. So moving to a consistent timeframe kind of helps with that because pretty much the majority of other cities in LA County are consistent with that. Some of the other items is that... I'll go back. Hold on. I want to make sure I hit all the points, because also there's consistency in how we do the flow of elections. So with the November general election, basically, the registrar voter has 30 days in which to certify the election. And then at the next meeting, following the certification, the city council members who are either termed out or voted out leave. The new members come in. So that puts it into the December timeframe, the first two weeks of December. Then from a city perspective, that gets to be in January, the League of Cities generally has their training and development for new members. So it educates, informs. You can do the conflict of interests, the harassment training and all the other training that is required of people sitting on the council. It also then allows us to do what we just did on Saturday, which was the strategic planning meeting, but in earlier timeframe in February, to then make it an effective part of the budget process. When you have somebody in a March or June election, those people who are elected in June are not getting sworn in until the budget is already enacted. So you're coming into office the second week of July or the first week of July, and you're inheriting in a budget that you had no role in. Same thing with March, is you're not coming in until April, and you're at the last bit of the budget development. You're still participating, but again, that back and forth isn't consistent and leads to, I think, better governance. So as we did the last time, if this is approved, there would have to be a extension of council terms. The last time council terms were extended by 12 months to go from March of an odd year to March of an even year. This would be a little bit less. So those elected in June of 2022, in 2026, it would be from basically July, when you'd be put in, to December. So about five months there. And then same thing for those that were elected or appointed in March 2024. It would be an extension in 2028. From there on, everything would be consistent. So we just have to get over that little bump initially. So the California Voting Rights Act was to increase voter awareness and participation. Basically, the average voter turnout in a primary is 31%. In a general election, so in November, it's 64%. So it, general effect there is having more voter participation, more voter understanding and turnout for local elections, which generally is a good thing. And then talking about earlier, what I said, the December installation of new members helps with coordinating the education and the budget development. So the next steps, if approved, this is the first reading. There would be a second reading of the ordinance on June 2nd. And then unlike other ordinances, which take effect 30 days thereafter the adoption, this one has to be sent to the County Board of Supervisors because they're going to have to approve it. Once it's put on the board and it's ministerial, they'll approve it. And then we'll work with the county because within 30 days of that, there will be a mailer that goes out to every registered voter, and there's about 22,200 or so in the city. They would get a postcard saying the election date for 2026, 2028 has been changed. Here's the information. For more information, go to the city's website or the LA County Registrar Voters website. So with that, the recommended action is to introduce by title only and waive further reading of an ordinance titled, "An Ordinance to the City Council of the City of Laverne, California, Changing the Date of the City's General Municipal Election From the Date of the Statewide Primary in Election Years To the Date of the Statewide General Election, First Tuesday After First Monday in November in Election Years."
There will be a test for all of you after this, and remember every single thing that we just said regarding this moving. We're moving it basically three or four months.
Since we're making all these changes, can we bring back the electoral fair?
That's a great idea. Councilman Johnson? Make it so. Good try, good try, Mr. Johnson. With that, I'm gonna open up public comment. Is there any public comment on this item? That would be no. We're gonna close public comment, bring it up to the deis. Do we have comments from council?
My, my only comment, I understand the change, would be the confusion of the districts with, with the school district as well. When a resident lives in one district, District 2, for the city, but maybe District 4 for the school district. So just trying to make sure that we're communicating that out so that everybody understands where they vote for and the candidates that they have. And then it makes a lot more for, a lot more confusion of signs and vote for which district and things like that out there in our city when they are combined. Because we've, we've had separate city and school district. There are other towns that have both together, but we have not had that together here. So really just trying to make sure that is understood by our residents.
Thank you, Mr. Crosby. Any other comments? Johnson.
I'm assuming that the districts will remain the same boundaries as they currently are?
Yes, districts only change after the census, and then there's the whole map process again. So yeah, 2032 would be when new districts would be put in place.
And nine supervisors.
Four districts and one at-large mayor, because if it's approved in 2030. 2030.
2030. And 2032, nine county supervisors. Okay. I'm gonna read this again. Is there a motion to introduce the title only and waive further reading of an ordinance titled, "An Ordinance of the City Council of the City of Laverne, California, Changing the Date of the City's General Municipal Election From the Date of the Statewide Primary in Election Years To the Date of the Statewide General Election, First Tuesday After First Monday in November in Election Years."
So move.
Second. Vote, please.
That item was approved 5-0 after being moved by Johnson, seconded by Cash Alfaguita.
Very good. Thank you, council. We will scratch that last one because we're gonna work on that later. There's no other business tonight, so we will move on to public comments. This is the time set aside for anyone wishing to address the city council on items not listed on the agenda within the subject matter jurisdiction of the city council. Brown Act prohibits the city council from engaging in discussion on any item not on the posted agenda. Your concerns may be referred to staff or placed for discussion at a later date. At this time, anyone wishing to speak can come up to the podium. Anyone wish to speak on open public comment? Laurie, you're looking at me. You want to come up? I know you do. I know you do, Laurie. We're gonna close public comment and bring it up to the deis.
Ms. Mayor?
Yes.
Could I take just a personal point of privilege for a quick second?
Absolutely.
And do a very quick brag?
Yes.
My son-in-law, Tucker Boys, is in New York right now rehearsing to become a cast member of the Addams Family touring production. And he will be in Cerritos playing in that play on June 6th and 7th of this year. I know that conflicts a little with your event, but it's an evening event, so hopefully.
Evening, evening.
And I just, I just want, I'm very proud of him, so I just wanted to brag a little bit.
Will you give us some information on that? Because we, I just absolutely love the Addams Family stuff, and I think most of us do.
Absolutely will. Thank you.
Thank you. Wonderful information. Bring up the deis, Councilmember Lau. You've got your notes.
I do have my notes. I'll be short and sweet.
I will, if you make it short and sweet.
So Laverne Day at the fair was last Friday, and so I just wanted to let anyone who hasn't had a chance to go to the fair yet. The last day of the fair is May 26th, which is Memorial Day. So get, you know, if you didn't get enough fried food or random things seen on TV or a free book from the library, then don't forget to go. We have, as the mayor mentioned earlier, we had our strategic planning meeting on May 17th, which was a Saturday, which was a long meeting. But I wanted to say thank you to staff and everybody that participated, to all of council for being there, obviously, and then for the public that did attend. So I wanted to say thank you to Yvonne Gayogos, Barbara Smythe, and Danita Bochamp for coming, as well as Officer McKinley. So you know, that input and that feedback is vital to moving us forward. So I think everybody could take time out of their Saturday to hang out with us. There is a Tri-City Mental Health meeting this Wednesday at 5:00 PM. For those interested in attending, you can attend by Zoom. We have the Memorial Day Ceremony at the BFW this coming Monday at 11:00 AM. So if you are interested in attending and celebrating with us, please see us there. YFAC is happening on, sorry, is happening on Tuesday. Oh, did it get canceled? Oh, I missed that. Just kidding, it's not happening. And then just for, for those, interesting, because we are at that time of year, graduations and all that fun stuff is happening. The University of Laverne will have their commencement weekend, the weekend of the 30th. So Baccalaureate will be held on Friday, May 30th at 4:00 PM at the Church of the Brethren. It's a lovely event. It's really pretty. And then commencement will take place all day Saturday. So there will be the undergrad commencement happening in the morning, and the graduates, the grad students will graduate in the evening. So for purposes of those celebrating, just keep that in mind. Traffic may be a little bit funky around university at that time, but it is all for a good cause because there are lots of people hitting a major milestone, and we should be really happy for them. So as always, have a good week, kind to one another, and we'll see you in June.
Mr. Crosby.
What Ms. Lau said.
Mr. Johnson.
I just want to thank all the staff that was here for the strategic planning. I think it really went well. I think it really went well. It's a lot of information, a lot to go over. Do appreciate everybody's input, help with that process. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson. Cash.
Thank you, Mayor.
Mayor Protem Cash.
Oh, I appreciate it. I love you all. I really, you know, my amazing colleague, she always nail on that head. Perfect. Other than the, I attended the San Gabriel Valley Vetral Control Board. So just a friendly reminder, as it's getting.
Tip and toss.
Yes.
Tip and toss.
Tip and toss that stale water you have. If anybody's interested in, people know, looking for any mosquito fish, I learned a lot about that.
I want to know if you're gonna wear the mosquito outfit.
I will wear the mosquito outfit. I gladly wear a mosquito outfit to benefit any cause.
Very good.
No shame in my game. But if anybody's looking interested in some mosquito fish, please let me know. I will personally have them delivered to your house. I will get them for you. I'm there.
Mosquitoes or the fish?
The mosquito fish.
In the plastic bag.
Hundred percent. I didn't, I won't even tell you the stupid question I asked if they're edible or not, but that was another story.
They're not certain.
I don't know, I was gonna surf, I'm gonna try something new, you know, but hey, it's a fun time. But anybody's interested, please let me know. Let me know. We'll have and deliver to you.
It only happens in Laverne.
That's right. I love Laverne.
Look at, oh, it's time. Oh, sorry.
Perfect time. Thank you.
Just a couple, go back, and thank you all. Great comments. The study session, I do want to thank staff, and I want to thank City Manager Domer. I think it's really important. We are getting closer together, understanding all the operations of the city. It's the most important thing as, as council, to understand how the city functions, how the financial backbone of the city functions, how we work together as a team. And we have come so far in a very short period of time, and I'm so appreciative of that. Just to let transparency, also for our residents, you're involved in everything we do. There's nothing we keep a secret. Finances are out there in the open, but every department is functioning together as a team, and that's the most important thing. Because we figure out ways to reduce our, our unfunded liabilities and also our deficits that we have, that we're currently have, and we're gonna work on those tightly and closely. But I really appreciate, appreciate that and the collaboration. I want to mention, too, that the county supervisors' meeting is on 5/27. We'll have more information out on the affable page situation. Also, the probation oversight committee was supposed to be on the 23rd, but they canceled that. So we will keep close tabs on that. It's really critical that we all keep our ear to the rail. And our city manager, Ken Domer, our mayor, Protem Cash, and myself will be relaying it to staff and also to our city council and our city to find out what direction we're gonna go and how this is gonna affect us. So I really appreciate that. With that, I want to close, as tonight, we want to close our meeting and adjourn in, in honor of the Meschel Cash-Vaguita's father's passing on May 3rd. May he rest in peace and rest with your mother comfortably with the family now. Thank you. Sorry for your loss, but he's in a much better place, much better place. And also mention the passing of our dear friend Gary Hunter and May, Rosemary Hunter, his wife. May the condolences of the family. But again, condolences to you, Mayor Protem Cash, and your amazing father and family. And you're a wonderful son, and your sister were there with him, and that's very important. With that, our next regular scheduled meeting will be June 2nd. June 2nd at 5:30 PM or 6:30 PM, normal time? I don't have anything. 4:30. I don't, I don't have it here. Sorry, guys. Yeah, we're at a special meeting at 4:30 PM on June 1st. Second. Don't be here on the 1st, be here on the 2nd. Yes. With that, we're adjourning at 7:46 PM. Thank you all for being here.